Hello everyone and welcome to our city council meeting today. It is Tuesday, 4:32 PM on November 16th, 2020. I will call this meeting to order. We will begin with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance conducted by Mr. Ron Burke. And our invocation will be conducted by Deacon John Pierce with St. Joseph's. If everyone can see. Welcome.
Let us begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask you for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Bless us with compassion, understanding and forgiveness as we work towards the common good for all those we serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
You skipped a line.
That's okay.
I was thinking ahead.
We all, we all, we got you covered.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
No.
No worries, no worries.
Moving on to agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. We do have several citizens that have turned in sign-in forms that wish to speak. We have Ms. Felicia Horn. If you could step up. Yes ma'am. And then just introduce yourself and your address.
Hi guys, I'm Felicia Horn. I am the YMCA director for the auditorium here. As of right now, I'm still looking for. Wanted to talk about renewing the contract with the YMCA. As of right now, we do, we're in the stages of renewing and I'm not exactly sure where we stand with that. I know from what I've heard, we were going to renew. We've already fixed several things in the auditorium and everything like that. We have been on good terms. I'm turning, I'm starting the Silver Sneakers program, which is if you have insurance, you can come swim with us for free. We do have three different schools that use us right now. So, I mean, this is an asset to the city. We also have, I have private lessons going on. I have lessons already planned for December, which are already like filled, all my slots are filled all the way into January. I have just like so much stuff going on and membership is going up. I feel like this is something that is really good for the city of Alice. I feel like this is something that, I mean, community-based, we need it, we need to grow strong. All of my employees are from Alice. I try to make sure all of my employees are from Alice to build a community bond. And honestly, since I've been here, that's what we've done. Those high school students, they are like the best. They have my heart, like these kids, they really do, they have my heart. And seeing them come out and swim in the lifeguards that I have, it is honestly the best. Because I have mermaids and mermaid, mermaids on my staff right now. Like when the, when we have our weekend events, they'll like dive for the brig or hook people to fasters and they'll challenge me. They challenged me to a few things. I was like, I could do, sorry, I can do this, I can do this. No way, no way. Those kids, they're better than me. And I feel like this is something that is more than just women use. We already confirmed the Christmas event that was supposed to happen. I guess it was supposed to happen somewhere else, but we're holding a Christmas event. Of course, everyone comes to eat for free. The cross-country team, track team, they've also used our facility running around and everything like that. I do have, we did put in a $200,000 grant, just so we can fix up the place more. That way we can run more programs. I'm also in the process of getting my director's license, so I can open up a summer camp there. I just, I just wanted to be as big as possible. Like these kids, like I honestly, I love working with kids. I worked at an alternative high school. I was a math and science teacher for about two years and I loved it. So seeing these kids come together where they have nothing to do, they're like, hey miss, can we swim at the pool after a football game? I'm like, sure, let me get, let me, let me get two lifeguards together. I'll be a lifeguard myself, but they'll come after football games and they'll just come out and have fun. And I feel like this contract, it is very important, especially the Y offering the programs that we do and just our name being in the community and helping it grow. I feel like, I don't know, like this is home to me now. Like I'm, I'm like searching for a house like no other, like I'm offering over asking price at this point. Just give me your house. I don't care. But it is really great. I love being in Alice.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We have our next citizen that wishes to speak. This is Jennifer Duncan.
Hi. My name's Jennifer and once again, I stand here before you on behalf of the Alice Auditorium and Water Park. Many of you may know me or remember me from live videos that I would make in support of the auditorium. My concerns, they began when I witnessed how unfair it was for our swim team to have to commute to practice. The district was having to pay for them to swim when our state-of-the-art pool sat there closed and abandoned. Our swim team was losing valuable UL time because I don't know if y'all know that drive time is included in their UL time. So they were losing practice time. And it's hard enough to be in the water just an hour a day when you're on a swim team. I know my children were on the swim team and my oldest swam for high school. And I know firsthand that the sport of swimming instills discipline, determination, responsibility and perseverance, et cetera. You know, these are all qualities that every parent wants for their child. The last time the swimming contract was to have been renewed, it became such a public fiasco that it ended up making headline news and brought much unnecessary and negative publicity, not only to our hometown of Alice, but to our school district. May you please allow me to remind you on this incident, and the city manager and school superintendent were very close to cementing a deal with a lease of $59,900. This was during the Thanksgiving break. The city council rejected the deal and then ordered the district to pay $100,000 and to manage it. Because the deal wasn't made, the council then voted to close and drain the pool. This placed our swimmers at risk again by having to travel once again to practice. No explanation has ever been given to the citizens as to why you increased the price and gave the superintendent the revised contract only three and a half hours before the city council meeting. And that night, some of our current council members made reference that he must not care about our students or even cared to take the time. Dr. Scarborough ended up clarifying false accusations and was honest on how irresponsible, how irresponsible that the contract and the city handled the contract. Now we'll forward now to a few years where the auditorium is now under the direction of the YMCA, which is a nonprofit organization. They've already proven that they are eager to listen to the community's needs and have implemented and changed hours according to citizens' responses. The contract renewal date, according to previous open records, it was supposed to have been done on October 7th, 2021 this year. I just, what reasons are there for not placing such a vital city contract on the agenda over an entire month late? I don't know, I mean, I, we want the YMCA to help manage it. Surrounding school districts such as Primmont, Rivera, San Diego and others would bring, trust their children to swim and cross train. They would pay for the use of the pool. We are the Hub City. And those other school districts want to come to our auditorium because it's heated and nearby. This helps bring revenue during off-season winter months. And most of those students will stay here and have lunch and shop in our, in our area, in our local restaurants. So if you please consider placing priority on city contracts such as this one. Our community and citizens and children deserve it. Your job is to equally promote and protect all public municipalities. So I just ask that you please take in consideration and, and help us the thriving hometown that we once were and everybody wants to come back and visit. It's what makes our community. It's what makes Alice buena gente. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another citizen that wishes to speak to council. This is Rosalinda Trevino.
She's giving me her time. I don't know how that works, but does that not allow anymore to be honored at all this house and that?
Well, let's be clear. It doesn't say anywhere in the city charter that you all can pass time or give time back and forth like we were governing or commission body. It's going to be up to the individual that runs the meeting, but you all do have your internal rules. It's pretty clear about listing your name.
And just to clarify, the only reason I asked was that that indiscretion caused a problem one time with the former mayor. And at that time, the city attorney did say that it was up to the mayor at that time and he corrected the issue. So I was going by what he said, but not, not as far as giving somebody time, but I read that somewhere else. Is that no longer allowed?
I think I just said it's up to.
Yeah, we will move, if Ms. Trevino's not here, we'll move on to the next citizen. And that would be Ms. Belinda Silva.
Well, then I will try and read very fast and at your discretion, for as soon as you can decide.
If you can just state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Belinda Silva. Everyone is imperfect, but some people are perfect at telling lies until the truth comes out. For example, there was a councilman who has made several posts on his personal site. And at other times, the same exact information has appeared inside such as Hub City, Real Clear, The Howler, et cetera. Most recently, he has taken to social media, which has perceived as trying to embarrass, question or humiliate Mayor Carrasco. Let me give you an example. At a recent city council meeting, Burke asked what the differences were between a city event and a personal event. He sarcastically smirked and said he would leave it at that. Another time, he made, he made it public that the only governmental duty she had was to be an emergency management director and to chair the city council meetings. The truth, an honest, effective and innovative leader such as Mrs. Carrasco is going to realize and focus on the city that she serves. She understands that COVID has indeed become an emergency for our community, citizens and the children who are now left behind without a parent. As of November 8th, a total of 5,772 confirmed cases and a total of 178 deaths were appeared in Chumwells County. So if you're questioning who held the memorial, how dare you miss the main point, which is that a mayor, that Mayor Carrasco was providing the community an opportunity to mourn, breathe and heal together, united and in unity. So my response to Mr. Burke is, what exactly does your job entail? Is it to interfere and micromanage between Coastal Bend and Del Mar and EDC? And if so, who asks the questions? You or your guest? Mr. Burke, respectfully, you need a civics lesson on how a city, community and partnership creates unity and how it strengthens a community like Alice. There's a common denominator in instigating and igniting rudeness towards Mayor Carrasco on social media. That title belongs to council, to a councilwoman. Open records prove that the city ma, hold on. Sorry. Open record proves that the city manager received the mayor's state of the event union since August 5th. And here are documents to prove that. There was numerous forms of communication via email where the mayor cordially invited everyone and included them inclusively on what they wanted to do or to promote the successes that they as individuals have done for our city. Thank you to Mr. Chris. He was the only one who responded and he changed his schedule to go. Even though he may not have had two months or three months time in advance as per given the papers, he changed his schedule. But here comes to, to Yanis and he, I believe that was his name. He changed his schedule and managed to come. So he had a very important job and he managed to change the schedule. There's been a lot of references. I don't want to go into that. I'm not here to cause division. I'm not here to be mean, simply to say what I mean. Our students need to come first. And I will leave these, these documents and submit them as minutes. Thank you.
That's right. So she will submit her documents to our city clerk. Yes. Thank you. We have another citizen that wishes to address the council. Mrs. Belinda Garcia.
I'm here from Alice. I'm here from Alice. And I'm coming to the auditorium. It is very important for our students. My boys, which now are grown men, they have been since 2001, because they were in the swim team and they had to travel back and forth, back and forth, busy day. And had to go practice, come back, wouldn't get home till 10 o'clock. And it was for years and years and years. But they did great in the swim team. And they went several times. They went to state. And that's because we didn't even have a pool. Every time we would go meet in Harlingen, they would make fun of the Alice students because they had no pool. But they would always come in as champions all the time. So could you imagine having a pool all the time? And now they're grown men, have children of their own. And I retired and so now I am a certified yoga teacher during my spare time. And because yoga is great everywhere. Yoga is for the, for any student, young, old, young, grown up, Silver Sneakers. So with the YMCA coming in, being part of this, there's so many different programs that are out there for the, for the community. And it really is important to have the YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see you. We will move on to agenda item number three, not seeing any other citizens.
Does anybody have public announcements?
Oh, I forgot the, sorry about.
No problem. Not that I have any, I just want to give everybody.
I apologize. So we'll start with Ms. Bowen, if you have any public announcements.
Yes, thank you very much. No problem. I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and to be safe. And you know, we have so much to be thankful for in this community. You know, we have really come a long way from years back. So always think positive and be blessed. And also, let's not forget, we are having a Christmas parade, our city. Alice Echo News Journal is the one that's leading this up. But it's December 2nd and it starts at 6 o'clock. So if you don't have your entry form, go to the Alice Echo News Journal. They will have it. I think the city has, has that too. And a few other areas in the community have that. So just happy Thanksgiving and God bless. Thank you so much.
And they're encouraging the floats to have lights.
Oh, yes. It's, and also the, the theme for the parade is wonderful. It's, it's called Everyday Heroes. So it's a wonderful theme as well. It's a lighted Christmas parade. So thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
I'm just going to follow, follow suit, if you don't mind, for the, for the same thing that Sandra said. You know, happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there. Let's remember, always remember what, you know, Thanksgiving, why we celebrate Thanksgiving. It's, it's family, it's friends, it's coming together and enjoying each other's company. Of course, we enjoy the food. Of course, we enjoy the football, you know. Of course, we enjoy all of that, but remember to be grateful for, for what you do have in this past year. You know, you know, as was stated, you know, earlier, our city has suffered some great loss. Not, not everybody is still with us to celebrate these holidays. So remember to hold the ones you have and be grateful for that time. And, and stay safe in the times of travel coming up. Let's enjoy what we do have coming up as a city. We have some great things going on that the community's putting on. The community is doing these things. Alice Echo is not the city. That, that parade that is coming on is not the city. That is somebody stepping up, doing something. When you see people come to town giving something, that is somebody stepping up, doing something. Not that the city doesn't try to do and, and, and serve, but individuals are doing the job too. And we need to remember that and be grateful for that as well. You know, get out there and do what you can for others as well. Stay safe this holiday season and just God bless you guys and thank y'all for coming out and thank y'all for being a part of our community.
And thank you again to all our citizens and our community for coming together and putting on these events. My goodness, October was very busy for everyone. So thank you to our community. We love you. Our citizens are awesome. And again, y'all have a blessed and, and happy Thanksgiving and we probably won't have, yeah, we will.
Speaking of events today, I can't think of it, but if y'all can look it up on Facebook, another community group that's stepping up today from, I think it starts at like six.
Six to eight.
Six to eight. There's a VFW and then there's also a Mi Casa event. So there's.
They're at the VFW.
Oh, they're, they're working together? Okay, perfect. So they're working together. So there's that event going on as well. So I mean, just keep your eyes out there because the community is awesome.
They sure are.
I think we're trying to prove again, come back to the idea that Alice is buena gente. So get out there and, and help out where you can as well.
Thank you to our community. Thank you. Moving on then, we will go to agenda item number three, which is our city manager reports.
Mayor Council, I just wanted to let you guys know, we were going to have the employee handbook, policy and procedure manual coming up to the city meeting, but we have sent in a TML for additional review. And also John and I are doing a final review on it too. So it'll probably be in the December meeting. Get something back. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Esparza. Moving on to agenda item number four, introduction of Officer Manuel Garcia and K-9 Ricky. That's our new. And then our police, Mr. Eden Garcia.
Thank you for having us. Mayor, members of the council, our city manager and our city attorney, thank you for having us. So we went out and we, we noticed that we needed another K-9 in our unit to help us, especially with looking for drugs. It's not a dual purpose. It's just simply for, for drugs. And so we found this same company that we got the first one, the last one from. So we thought that Manny Garcia would be a perfect fit as a K-9 officer. And so he was excited to go, but I, I can keep talking about the dog and stuff, but I'm going to turn it over to Manny and let him handle it.
Hi, welcome.
Ricky, she's a half German Shepherd, half Belgian Malinois. She was a rescue dog out of California. She was originally a search and rescue dog of buildings to look for people who were in the building.
But the original, the original person who had him, had her, thought that she was too much to handle. So he sent her to another shelter in California. And the person that was in charge of that shelter contacted Wes King, who is the founder of Sector K-9 in Midlothian, Texas, who takes in shelter dogs and trains them to turn them into narcotics dogs, bite dogs, dual-purpose dogs.
She's very active.
But so Wes took in Ricky, trained her for a couple of months in the field of narcotics. Once he thought she was ready, he reached out to us, had said that she was, that she was ready to have the handler come up. I went up to Midlothian for two weeks. Whenever I got her, she was, she's a green dog. She's never done this before. Whenever I got her, she was only trained to alert to the odor of cocaine. During those two weeks that I had her, we worked on the other three that she is also now trained to alert to, which is methamphetamine, heroin and marijuana. By the time we finished the two-week course, she was solid in all four. Now she alerts to all four. But I'm glad to have her in my life now and I'm glad to be a, I'm glad on this new journey that I have in my career and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, welcome and thank you. Yes.
Sure. I mean, if.
Ricky.
Yeah, but, but will she be able to handle us being all around her like that? Awesome, yes. Yes, how old is she?
She's two.
She's two. She looks like a puppy. She looks like a puppy.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Pretty dog, you're wrong.
Yeah.
Beautiful dog.
Well, you'll be out, you'll be out here in a little while again, don't forget.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, the statistics. She is so cute.
I'm going to bring her every meeting.
Release stress. That was so cute. Perfect. And moving on to agenda item number five, presentation and discussion with Bill Norris with Norris Liao regarding updates to groundwater project.
It's a hard one to follow.
Sure.
I have no report. Just, I think you should have a copy of a, our monthly written report. Just to give you, I'll run very briefly through here. Seven Seas and us and the city, we meet twice a week, we meet twice a month. Usually the, the day before this meeting and then two weeks prior. Not much update on their design. They're kind of working on some of the things that we have going on with TCQ and the Texas Water VOMA Board. They're on item number two coming up date. We did meet three weeks ago with the Water VOMA Board, finally. And we got a lot of questions and directions and requests and things from that. So legal questions, I think, have been answered from the standpoint of the contract with Seven Seas. And then they brought up a lot of what-if scenarios. What if we can't get a permit? What if we can't do this? What if we can't do this? And so, so we're addressing those issues to where even if X and Y don't happen, that we can continue on with Z without knocking the project out of its feasibility. So that's what I'm working on now, is working on the final completion of the engineering report with all the different things that they had. And we've spent a lot of, a lot of time this week on the financial aspects of the project to make sure that the cost of the project is within the city's ability to repay. Obviously, you're getting, you're actually getting a loan, but you're also getting some reimbursement money or, they don't call it grants anymore. They call it loan forgiveness. So just another, I still call it a loan, but. And so I think at the last meeting, I was hoping that I could, after we met, that we could not have to do the environmental information document. Not because we don't agree with that, it's just that we're already on interrupt, disturbed property. that we're already on, uh, interrupt, disturbed property, uh, which means it's already been disturbed. There's probably not going to be anything there, uh, to report on. But I think they were ready, ready for that question and it was emphatically no. Um, so that is something we'll still have to go forward with. And so what that does, doesn't really change anything so much from the timeframe. Uh, it just means that there's just additional work and other things to go through because we still have two things besides, or another thing besides that is a, the critical path, which is the discharge permit. Both of those take about six to eight months. And so we have to get the discharge permit, so it's just not necessarily delay anything. So as far as the discharge permit, uh, I think at the last meeting last year, we put out stream gauges, um, and some of the alternatives we're looking at for discharge. So let's say that T C Q says we can't discharge, so we're looking at, uh, an irrigation type well, or let's say you can discharge, but we need to reduce the concentration. So an irrigation well that is in the Evangeline Aquifer, that's a lot less expensive than what we have from the deeper aquifer that we could actually blend. The other option is to utilize the, the concentrate, uh, and blend irrigation water with it to go to the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so there are alternatives. I think deep well injection is probably out of the question. So those are just a couple of things that we're working on the, to satisfy that, hey, there are other alternatives. The ones we're doing right now is the best alternative, but if we do come up with a roadblock, then we, we know how to handle it. Uh, blending program, uh, we will continue to do that, um, and working with, uh, the power and, um, for the, for the site. So we're just continuing, it won't be, probably the report, reports won't be really exciting, you know, for the next six months, but, um, but there'll be progress. It won't be any, uh, groundbreaking or anything, but, uh, but we will be meeting on a, a twice a month basis to keep, keep the ball moving, make sure we don't drop the ball. We're still, still looking at, um, what was it, the twenty, twenty-three, you know, probably the summer of twenty twenty-three of completion of the total project. And that's, that's what we're trying to push for. Do I answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am, this time, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No, good, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number six, appointment of at least one council member to serve on the evaluation committee for the request for qualifications, R F Q, to develop a master drainage planning study. Ms. Barbara?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you will recall, April of this year, Texas Water Development Board approved grant funding of two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars with a local match of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to fund the development of a master drainage planning study. Um, and after that time, uh, in September, the project engineer, the Texas Water Development Board project engineer for our project has, uh, sent us documents that needed to be, um, executed and finalized prior to starting the, the project. Um, those documents included the grant agreement, an S R O agreement, a closing memo, et cetera. So we've done that and so now we're ready to issue a request for qualifications.
One moment.
Appointing order.
Sure.
The only thing that's on the agenda is appointment of at least one council member to serve on the evaluation committee for the request for qualifications. And so we can stick it to that. That would probably be.
Okay, so the R F Q is gonna be.
I appreciate explaining what this was.
Um, and we're, um, it's gonna be posted on the website. So we're asking you to appoint at least one council member for the evaluation committee. The proposals will be due January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two and we'll, uh, distribute copies to the evaluation committee at that time and, uh, hope to bring a recommendation back to council February twenty twenty-two.
I appreciate your detail to, to explain this, that.
I should've just said what's in.
Basically, as a point of order, we do have, we had a few things that we had gone outside of our.
Thank you, mister. Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Okay, so counsel.
May I be glad to volunteer? Y'all need somebody.
Love to see you get involved in that. That'd be awesome. I'm part with that. Did, so do we need to make a formal?
Do we need to do any kind of formal?
May I make a motion to appoint, um, a council member, Molina, uh, to serve in the evaluation committee for the request for qualifications to develop a master drainage planning study?
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, sign. Okay. Mr. Molina.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Barb.
Will Ms. Bowen be joining us for the next agenda item? Okay, proceed with, uh, agenda item number seven, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application with the Coastal Bank Council of Governments for grant funding through the C B C O G Regional Solid Waste Grants Program, authorizing the city manager to, to act on behalf of the city of Alice in all matters related to the application and the subsequent grant contract and grant project, which may result and see pledging if that, if a grant is received, the city of Alice will comply with the grant requirements of the C B C O G, the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality T C E Q and the state of Texas. Mrs. Barbara, so.
Mayor and council, um, this is the first time since twenty fourteen that the Coastal Bank Council of Governments has had funding, uh, for solid waste grants for individual projects. Um, and, uh, we were notified of that opportunity. The grants were due October, uh, the grant applications were due October twenty-ninth. Um, our code enforcement department, uh, has a need and, uh, for surveillance cameras, um, for illegal dumping. And so we worked with the code enforcement department to put together a grant application that was submitted, uh, by that deadline. So we're asking you to ratify that submittal, um, and through your resolution, which will then, uh, submit to the C O G. And, um, be happy to answer any questions about the grant application.
Okay, counsel, Mrs. Bowen, you have any questions?
Oh, no, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No, pretty good, great.
Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
I will entertain a motion.
May I make a motion adopting a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application for the Coastal Bank Council of Governments for grant funding through the C B C O G Regional Solid Waste Program, uh, Grants Program and authorizing the city manager, uh, to act on behalf of the city of Alice in all matters related to application and any some subsequent grant contract and grant project with, uh, which may result. In addition, pledging that if the grant is received, the city of Alice will comply with the grant requirements for the C B C O G, the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality and the state of Texas.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, sign. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Grace.
Thank you. Okay, uh, before moving on to agenda item number eight, uh, Mrs. Sandra Bowen did submit.
No, I'm not. Well, leave it out of the.
No.
Yeah, that was for six.
It was for number six, I'm sorry. You put, uh, nine, I know. Okay. Should be six, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, then we can change the record, just say that was meant for number six.
Number six, thank you. And I took a little break while I went out.
That's good.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so agenda item number eight, discuss, consider and act upon awarding the contract for the rental of an excavator to the next lowest bidder for the C D B G water, wa- wastewater project, number seven, two, one, nine, four, eight, nine, for wastewater infrastructure improvements on San Felipe Trevino and Escobar Streets. Mrs. Mrs. Grace.
Mayor and council, at the September twenty-first meeting, the recommendation for rental of the excavator was to award the contract to Waquisha Pierce Industries. And following that meeting, the grant rental contract was sent to that firm. Uh, and we were later notified that the firm would not sign the grant rental agreement and we don't know why. So, um, and in the meantime, um, the city purchased a wheel loader, which was also a, a rental contract that we recommended to that same firm. So we don't need a rental contract for that piece of equipment. We, we just need it for the excavator. So we're asking you to award to the next lowest bidder, uh, which would be Nuasis Power Equipment for the excavator.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Molina?
No.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
No.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Okay.
May I make a motion, awarding the contract for the rental of an excavator to the next lowest bidder, be in Nuasis Power Equipment for the C D B G Wastewater Project, number seven, two, one, nine, four, eight, nine, for wastewater infrastructure improvements on San Felipe Trevino and Escobar Streets.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second, um, by Mr. Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, sign. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item number nine, discuss, consider and act upon authori- authorization to join a settlement proposal tentatively agreeing to, subject to client approval by the parties to gas utilities proceedings pending at Railroad Commission of Texas for securelization, tization, I'm sorry. Let's, I messed that word. Of the ex- extraordinary gas costs, the gas utilities, Atmost Energy, Centerpoint Energy and Texas Gas Services incurred during the winter storm Yuri. Um, Mr. Esparsa, is this?
Yeah, the city attorney's gonna speak to this.
Okay. Mr. Lemon?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that, uh, in your packet, you can see the emails that went and basically, uh, uh, you'll recall that we had brought to you, uh, a request for approval to participate negotiations to see what we could get from the, uh, uh, gas companies in these regards with the consortium that we're a party of. Uh, this was an issue or a negotiation that really the railroad commission, um, could do whatever they wanted to do. We didn't have a say in it. And additionally, that we couldn't seek reimbursement. We anticipated it would cost us around sixteen hundred dollars if it was divided up, based upon the estimated hours that they had. Uh, in actuality, uh, the, uh, energy companies capitulated, gave in to the demands of our consortium and went ahead and, and reduced, uh, what they were gonna charge us by reducing what they said the value of their assets that they used. Asset valuation is anywhere from five point six million to eighteen million dollars that you will not see on our constituents, on your public's, uh, bills. And that's throughout the entire consortium, which does include Austin and San Marcos. So there are some, some larger communities than us. Uh, and then additionally, uh, the gas companies agreed to go ahead, or the utilities agreed to go ahead and to reimburse the attorneys for the fees to do that. So all in all, it's a win-win situation. So you guys did a good thing getting involved in it. Really, the only thing that we're asking today is that, uh, that you approve, uh, participa- participation in the proposed settlement and allow the city manager to take all action necessary to do so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lemon. Counsel, any questions? Mr. P. Crisp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain, um, a motion at this time for agenda item number nine.
May I make a motion to authorize the city manager to, uh, join the settlement, uh, proposal and sign all document as necessary?
Second, sufficient.
Yes, sufficient, yeah, it's good.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, sign. Motion passes. We'll move on to agenda item number ten. Okay, agenda item number ten, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a convention and visitors' bureau grant application process. This is presented by council member, Mr. P. Crisp and Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Robert Molina.
All right, uh, I don't know if y'all have it in y'all's paperwork, y'all should. I, I submitted, uh, five documents and I know it's a lot of information. Uh, um, what I want to speak to i- is first and foremost is the general process of what I've basically given. And all of this paperwork can be made, will be made available to the city because it is public record already. Um, if we approve it, obviously, we want people to pick up the guidelines, we want people to pick up the applications, we want people to, to go through this and, uh, bring back any information. But what we have is, um, the general concept is really aimed towards twenty twenty-two, twenty-three grant funding through C V B, which is not general fund tax dollars, that is specific money that comes from hotels and can only be utilized for, for specific things. So we need to keep that in mind, uh, that we're not digging in our ad valorem tax, we're not digging into ourselves tax, we're not digging into utility funds. It is just these monies that we are looking to get out into the public. But most importantly, we need to remember that by getting this out in the public, the ultimate goal is making sure people stay in our hotels. It is a hotel occupancy tax that is required to be spent on things that get people into hotels. So having kind of set that as a tone, the idea is, is that we start a grant process where at the beginning of the year, or at the end of the year, when we set our budget, we know who is getting what and how much and when. Okay? The same way cities will apply for grants for C V B, for, uh, um, for water drainage and stuff that we've just talked about, is the same process we want to do. A lot of places do it. Uh, this is the template for what I put together, was hugely based off of McKinney, Texas. But McKinney does grant process, Broken Arrow does grant process, in the state of Texas, you've got Belton, other states, Findlay, uh, McPherson, and those are just some of the ones where I went through and looked at their websites and saw the documentation and how they put this together so that it becomes a fair and, and unbiased distribution. And that's really what we want. We want to make sure that, that we give the money to the right people that are gonna put people in hotels. The events are great. Don't get me wrong, our people need to actually enjoy those events, but in the end, we need to make sure we put people in hotels. So it's an extensive document that basically asks for a lot of stuff. But when you're talking about giving away thousands of dollars, we should know who we're giving it to and the purpose for which we're giving it. So there is, there is a quite, quite a bit of detail there, but what we've, what we've done and Mr. Molina and I worked on and what we saw in other cities do, it's based off of matrix, matrices. Okay? And some of them are as small as ten hotel rooms, you get five hundred bucks. Fifteen hotel rooms, you get a thousand, twenty, you get fifteen hundred, and that's the cutoff. Well, we don't want to be that tight. We want to be able to give people more money. So the matrices that are built here that you see in front of you are five to ten, ten to twenty, uh, you know, twenty to thirty and up and up and up, and it goes all the way to where they can receive up to ten thousand dollars. But we also saw that other places offer what they call a multiplier. And what that is, is where, uh, a city or an event that has been longstanding and has proven itself to be beneficial to the hotels and to the community, can get a multiplier up to one point five times whatever the first matrix is. So in some cases, it can go up to, you know, fifteen thousand, but we're not going that far. We're really, what I presented and what we talked about, we're setting a cap at twelve thousand, five hundred maximum for the events, maximum. And they have to prove it. Now, on the backside of this, by me saying they have to prove it, the most important thing is verifiable hotel stays, right? I went through and, and, and talked to some of the hotel managers and they're all on board. They all want to be a part of this for us to get the money out there so that they can get more people in their hotels. so that they can get more people in their hotels. They want these events. And they just wanna know the direction. And the first thing we do is, and I presented y'all with, it's a small form that can be dropped off by whoever's hosting the event. And it has, you know, what hotel are you at? What event are you here for? What days did you stay? What's your name? And then it's picked up by whom, and they're presented back to us. And they're saying, yeah, call us and validate that they had 25 stays. Because we sit here and talk to them, and we know why they're here. We know why they're at these places. So, the hotels are willing to work with us. At the end of it all, there is a form that they have to turn in to us after the event that requires them to go back through the event, give us the budget, make sure everything happened, and then we will issue a check. For the most part, we're looking at doing this from this point forward on a reimbursement basis, for the most part. I'll explain the difference there. On a reimbursement basis, so we can validate why they deserve the money. Okay? In the past, we've been issuing it in advance. Two years ago, we ran, or was it two or three years ago? We ran out of money because we were just giving it away. We ran out of money, and therefore, some of the events that we wanted to be able to support, we couldn't support. And we realized that the system was flawed, and we pulled back. And now, we're revamping it. We should've, we could've probably looked at it last year, but last year was a COVID year, and there were no events. But now that we're seeing events, the world is opening up again. We, Mr. Molina and I really felt like, and I'm sorry if I'm putting words in your mouth, but we really felt like it was time to start getting that money back out there. So, you know, the process that I put in place is very detailed on the part of the organization. It requires for nonprofits where some other cities and states do not. But we're, you know, we need to get our heads around this. And if we wanna change it and open up later, I feel like we can. But what we need to start and what we need to do for the most part is put a process in place that is, I'm gonna say it, pretty strict, that requires for the organizations to do the legwork as opposed to our staff. We need to get to a point where if you show us where the money was spent, we can issue the organization a check. Not have our staff have to track 1099s and get W9s, and then issue a check, and then have to send stuff out afterwards. No, it's all the organization's responsibility. That's what the majority of the cities that I saw do. So, what I presented was the 2022, 2023 documentation guidelines, which is something they'll see in advance, and in the actual application. Now, for that year, we would look at a schedule, and I wanna bring it back once y'all have a better chance to review that. What I would foresee is that in June, it's, in June, we open it up and say, if you want to apply for the grant, let us know. Kind of like a letter of intent, a registration. Once we validate you're nonprofit, then you get an application. Those applications are reviewed, they're matrixed, and they're added to the budget. So, we know in the next year how much money we're spending. No questions asked, nothing else. XYZ company, XYZ org's getting 10,000. This one's getting 2. This one's getting 3. But the idea is, is that once they prove it, then they get paid. If they show up and they say, hey, we had 100 rooms, but they show up and they only had 50, they can only receive the funding for 50. But they're still gonna get funding. See, we don't ever wanna cut anybody off, but we gotta get to where they're getting what is justifiable across the matrix so that we're not giving a bias to any single organization or anything like that. It's fair across the board. Now, earlier I said that it's a reimbursement basis. The idea too, and I've seen from other cities, is that there can be some prepayment for longstanding events. Longstanding event, if they've been doing it for five years, they might get 25% in advance to help them out. If they've been here for 10 years, they might get 50% in advance to help them out and move it forward. But they have to still fill out the paperwork for reimbursement. What happens if they don't fill out the paperwork? Next year, they don't qualify. If they didn't, if they don't do their part, I mean, and it builds off of this. So, we're building a relationship with these organizations to move forward. We're not asking a lot if you're asking for thousands of dollars. Couple hours of paperwork. The biggest difference between what I am asking y'all to try to approve tonight is the 21, 22, which would be a grant process the same way, but more of an application and not an all at once. We have reduced the dollar amounts to, during the budget sessions, I asked staff to say, hey, I wanna put $10,000 in there for events. So, we started with that. That doesn't mean later on, we can't vary this year's, right? Move the cap back from 10,000 or 12,500 to 2,500. Again, we're working with a process that we're in the beta testing phase. But we want to give money out to these organizations. We want them to put beds, heads in beds. We want these things to happen. We wanna reopen Alice, Texas to events. But we have to do it in baby steps, in my opinion. So, I think that, that, that we have, we presented a decent process. I think there may be some changes that need to be made today, but I think that we can move forward with this and adjust it on the fly if we need to. I really don't think there's gonna be a lot to actually hit there. But you never know the kinks coming down the road from the organizations, and we need to work with them. We need to work with the hotels. So, one thing I will go back and note is that this year, we did 10,000 because that's all I asked for during the budgeting process. If we wanna change that, if we wanna do something else, it's open for debate right now, not debate, but discussion. Come next year, we need to kind of come up with an idea of a percent. Some, a lot of cities say, okay, 15% of what we brought in, 10% of what we brought in, 5% of what we brought in last year is what we're gonna give out. If you notice, my document has a big yellow tab on it saying what percentage, what a dollar amount. I had asked Finance Department to come up with a number for how much we actually received last year, just so we can have an idea of it when we move forward. How much did we bring in last year for Texas?
179,890. 179,890.
That was 179,890. So, the idea would say, let's base a percentage off of that that we're gonna go towards events. The, really, the highest I ever saw in anybody else's documentation was 15%. And at that, we're, somebody gotta help me out with some math real quick because that number just hit me.
It sounded like it was under 30.
Yeah. It's gonna be under 30,000. So, we're looking at just under 27,000. That would be part of the budgeting process for next year. And the way that that works is, the more the hotels generate, the more people we get into the hotels, the higher that number goes up, the more we're able to give away every year, every year, every year. And that's the goal without draining that system. It's actually building that system up for us by utilizing it. I will, I know that y'all had it. I know I put out 40 pages or 50 pages or whatever it was for y'all to read over the weekend. I will answer any questions, or let's, you know, just open it up for discussion and go from there.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Mrs. Bowen? Um, yes, just a few. I did, I did go over it. Of course, I like to study and read it over and over. But what is the timeline for the initial review on the application? Because you mentioned we, the city will review the application. What is the exact timeline from turning in the application to getting an answer?
Are you talking about for this year or are you talking about for next year?
Well.
Because next year, I foresee it being a month.
Okay.
Because the idea for the fiscal year where we're applying it all as a budgeted item, right? I foresee us getting basically a month.
Okay.
And any discussion that happens, it happened, we can add it to our budget meetings. Right? So, like, when they apply, let's say we cut off applications, August 1st, August 15th. We have budget meetings throughout the whole time.
Right.
And if we want them to present, since they are budgeted items,
Right.
we can call in them to give us a presentation. Everybody gets a chance to talk. We can be presented these applications. So, as a council, we can all review them in open record. And it states in here that your application is open record.
Right.
Because it's public monies that we're spending, you know? So, a month for this year? I would say it's gotta at least be one council meeting. You know what I mean? Like, it has to at least be one council meeting for council to actually see an application, to actually review it. I would love to go through and say, hey, it's a 90-day thing. It's forever because part of the money is supposed to be sent, spent on the publication of the event in order to draw people in. So, the more time we have, the better off we are. And that gives us at least 30 days. But, you know, each situation needs to be handled independently because we do know one of the biggest events we have in the city is forthcoming.
Right.
One of the absolute biggest events that we have in the city is forthcoming. Love to see if they can get the documentation through and for us to be able to look at it and process it. But it's, after today, it's on them.
Right, right.
Right? So, I just wanna put that out there that we, for me, it's just opening it up again. And I wanna be able to do it. So, that would be the idea, is at least one council meeting so we can talk about it. It removes the idea that staff is gonna play with. In the past, the chamber would give away 1,800. Staff would give away 5,000. Council was giving away 10,000. It removes that and basically says, put this many people in a hotel room, you can make this much money.
Okay, okay. And let me see, the other thing was, we can accept this tonight. And of course, everything can be tweaked.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, as we go along, there'd be a little hiccup. We found that, you know, this doesn't work for our city. We can change it. It's not really set in stone. Council can change it.
Correct, correct. I mean, nothing.
Just want the citizens to know. Yeah, just want the citizens to know that, you know, this is not set in stone. It's something that we, it's a work in progress.
It is a, very much a work in progress, just like anything that, you know, new. I mean, like, the last one was a work in progress. We had a horrible incident, not a horrible incident. We had drama from an incident that happened one time, and we saw that we had a flawed process thing.
Okay.
So, we worked to put something else in. We noticed that system had a little bit of flaws to it. So, we're just continuing to work to put a better system in place.
Okay. And the last thing is, the amount for this year, we have 10,000 right now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
In there, okay. And the maximum amount is 2,500?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's because the amount is so low that it's in there right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, so that we can?
That's what I worked off of.
That's fine.
That's what I worked off.
I just wanted to make it clear.
I figure we have four events. I don't think very many of them can actually hit the qualifiers that are gonna get them the full 25, but we wanna give them the opportunity to.
Right.
But then again, we can always open it up and add more.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So.
Well, thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burke?
Yep. I assume that the mechanics, the mechanics of it will be handled by the Finance Department. Receipt of applications, receipt of verifications and financials. And will they have any responsibility for verifying anything? Or is everything solely on the back of the organization and the council?
Well, here's how I, here's how I say that because I don't direct staff.
Yeah.
I put it on Michael.
Right.
Sadly. And Michael's, how he directs the staff will be on his part. Like, in my mind, I envision a portion of it, yes, is the Finance Department. A portion of it may be our Community Development Director or, you know, or whomever. You know what I mean? Like, there's portions of it. The applications themselves may be our city clerk. But that's gonna fall on Michael to actually direct who best handles it. But this process, I think, pulls some of the reins back from having staff to have to work too hard on too many things because in the past, they were like, oh, we need $600 for this band. And then they have to get their W9, and then they have to do it. And then at the end of the year, they have to give them a 1099. Then we have to get this much for this band. You know, it kind of removes that process.
Yeah, my concern was that we go in so many different directions with it that one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. And that's what got us.
Yes. I think in this, the way this process is, the steps that it takes, it doesn't get to the Finance Department until the final report is submitted. Before that, the only time is in case they get a preapproval from council that they might get the 25% or the 50%. Then Finance is kind of like, they don't have to really get their hands involved until it's that time. So, it kind of puts it in steps as opposed to in the past where it was like, this, they're handing it off internally.
In the document, the term "board" was in there, but is that not synonymous with council?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted, yeah, there wasn't a separate.
Yeah. I apologize. If it does reference a board, it's because it's, sometimes it's, you know, typing. And to be perfectly honest, this template really comes from McKinney and some of these other cities. So, I'm gonna be perfectly honest. I didn't reinvent the wheel. So, some of this is cut and paste and update to the city of Alice. And there's very, what they're very well might be where they call their city council a board. You know what I mean? So, I may have missed that, and I apologize. But for the most part, they're very much synonymous. So. I'm good, thank you.
Let's ask Finance. I thought we had allocated 25,000 for the CVB funds, not 10,000. Can you clarify that?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought we had approved.
But that's everything. That's not just for events.
Yeah, that was all-inclusive. If, and we had that, if we do wanna have for this next event, a 4th of July event or something of that sort, that's why that money is also there. But, you know, the 10,000 is part of that 25.
So, we define that, or we just, it's 25,000?
It's in there, like.
So, it's, it's for our use as long as it's within the guidelines of the CVB, whatever the guidelines that the statute tells us.
Well, if that's the case, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we up the cap from 2,500 to 5,000 because we thought, we thought it was only.
Yeah, because.
Saying that you've got $10,000 allocated for your grant program.
Right. Just the, like the, like the 4th of July, the way you had planned.
No, the budget is.
That's what we're saying, it's not divided. It's 25, we upped it.
Yes. So, technically, it's, if you wanna keep it at 10, you can say 10, but if you wanna go to 25, 25.5, actually, the budget has 25.
Okay. And I'm gonna say this right here, why I kept it, why I put it there after discussions. I put it there because I was working on it, and I made that statement. I didn't want to go above and beyond what I said in open, in open record and say, hey, we're gonna open it up to 25 because that's what the budget says. No. When I sat in the meeting for the budget meeting, I said, I wanna see 10,000 in there for that. And I didn't wanna say, well, let's just use it all up. That's a decision for the council. We could alter the document accordingly, but I didn't wanna just put that in there. I wanted everybody to come together and say, well, I know you said 10, but I'd like to do 15, or I'd like to do 20. I wanna up this, I wanna do that. So, I kind of put it out there, and that's a great point for you to make So I kind of put it out there, and that's a great point for 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 you to make and for Mr. Molina to make, is, do we want to give out a little bit more? Again, we can always alter this like like Councilman Bowen said later on, but it's up to y'all. I I mean, I present, and as a council, we come together, so.
Right, okay.
And if we ever need a budget amendment for this, it, I mean, it's it's coming from hot funds, so it's not touching any other.
No.
Okay, correct.
I just, I just want to add something, uh, when Ron was asking a question about uh validating the hotel stays. Um, the idea is that, you know, the the um, the little forms on page eighty-six.
The tearouts.
Yeah, the tearouts, it's basically on the organization's responsibility to be accountable and go and pick those up and bring them in. But instead of them, you know, you don't know, I mean, they're rubber stamping on, well, they bring them in here, then that's gonna be up to city staff to validate that, and then to determine whether they did, let's say they projected they're gonna get forty-five rooms, and then they go and validate thirty-two, well, then that brought down their dispersment a lot, you know, so. And that's why if some of these that are getting twenty-five percent in advance or fifty percent in advance, uh, there'd be obviously a deduction in what they were projected to be dispersed and to hand out. So that that that's that's the general idea of it, but uh, back in the day, you know, years ago, we just hand out ten thousand dollars and never knew where it was going, or we would, we would uh, you know, speculate that people were staying in hotels, but we had no real physical tangible data that said, okay.
Still have to bring receipts, but yeah.
They brought receipts for what they spent.
It was really loose, like.
And then, yeah, and the chamber had, would pick up those, but we didn't have something that we could concrete.
But it never got here, yeah.
Yeah.
See, and the big thing is 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 we don't want to put the burden of the job of proof on staff. Okay, yes, we can call up the hotel and say, hey, I got a stack here that says X Y Z festival had twenty-five stays at your hotel. Do you think you had twenty-five, or at least twenty-five, or no, and we know, right? We don't have to go through there by name and say, did John Doe stay there, did this person stay there, because they know what's going on at their hotel. You know what I mean? But we have a stack of twenty-five, would you say at least twenty-five people stayed there? Yes, okay, great. Validate that, go to call the next hotel, validate it that way, and we move on, because these hotels want people in there.
I wanted to ask you, um, did you by any chance have an opportunity, or Mr. Molina, just to call McKinney and just kind of see how this is working out for them, or anything like?
I put in, I put in a call to them. This process has been in place for a while. They've been doing this. Now, the only difference that they do is that they split it up into two giving se- so they have.
They have two cycles.
They have two cycles. They have a, they have a first cycle, and they have a second cycle, fifteen, they only give away thirty thousand a year, and it's fifteen thousand and fifteen thousand. Uh, they've had it for a while. I'm actually waiting for them, because if you go and read through here, it references a uh um uh, an agreement, a performance agreement, and they're supposed to give me a sample of a performance agreement, they're supposed to give me a sample of a performance agreement, which basically says, once you're awarded the money, we expect what you said you were gonna do, we expect a hundred rooms, we expect this, and we expect that, and this is what you'll get from us. And that's just the final thing, that's just agreeing to take the money, like when we accept the grant, when we give our city manager the right to sign off on documentation, so.
And when Pete, when when Pete brought this to me, and or at least kind of, this is all his work, and you know, I was like, okay, McKinney, you know, it's a hundred and sixty-some thousand population, you know, it's apples and, you know, oranges or whatever, you know, it really wasn't comparable, so.
I think it's good, though, to have a guideline.
Yes, 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 yes.
Process, which I think is great.
It's just like he's saying, you know, it's it's, you know, why reinvent the wheel? Yes, it's, I don't know, sixteen, eighteen pages or whatever, but it keeps everybody accountable, we have a grip on things now. And it's with just some small adjustments on, to make it more practical and applicable to to our market, you know, and and uh.
I mean, they had, they were asking for up to three hundred rooms for certain dollar amounts, and we have to be realistic within the area that we serve, right? Now, we've been sitting on money for a long time, so we can be willing to give away a little bit more than some other places, but there's no way we can do thirty thousand dollars. Yeah, I tweeted.
And these are just suggestions, if somebody has something else, I mean, this is, it's open and.
Yes.
Chocolate.
Um, and I was gonna ask you, in in researching this, did you um maybe think that perhaps it'd be uh best practice to have that like a committee, they do have a visiting um McKinney committee, or whatever it was, or board. Um, and I know it referenced Visit Alice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know, I was just wondering, to manage that, do you think it's something that would be easier than, because it does say council and staff?
On the, yes.
Throughout the document, and so I just thought.
Well, I think staff does a lot of the valuations, and and for me, the ultimate goal, once this thing is 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 nested and in place, is we do have an outside board. We have an outside board that consists of hotel managers that review this. But the thing is, is the the direction that we went, the direction that I went here, doesn't leave it really open for variables. So do you necessarily need an external board? Because do you hit these points? As we tweak it, we may say we're gonna add more variables that say, do the hotels really want X Y Z festival going on, or this and the other, and they can play with their variables.
I'm not more or less um asking about that, I'm asking more about the management, like the implementation, and like you said, you're gonna leave it up to Mr. Esparsa to to figure out how we're gonna execute this document. He has the guidelines, he'll have the application process, but in in there, it addresses council and staff. I just wanted to know, so is that, if we adopt this, and we are okay with this, and we proceed, um, there's, I just say, it's a little still confusing, kind of, what direction?
That would have to be revised, to me, that would have, they stretched out either one or the other.
You guys are gonna make a decision, we're gonna collect paperwork, we're just processing people.
That's it.
And when it comes to the budget, it'll be line itemed on there, this organization, this organization, and it's it's there, it's set before, and then the the budget gets finalized, and it's it's set.
I guess we'll go through it, and we're gonna have to, like you said.
Yeah, because for for the most, go ahead.
No, like Pete had had made made some comments about, we can do up to this and up to, and I said, no, we we don't need any gray area. You know, I I want to remove human intervention, I I want to basically black and white, whatever's on here is for for you, me, everybody. So we don't need a board, you know, we just need, hey, this is, these are the guidelines, everything's there, I I can understand her being, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Costco being concerned about those words, because it it kind of concerned me too, even the board part, the board term, and maybe one needs to be left out to indicate, you know, it were we're we're, the only thing we're gonna be doing um is is what, hearing the presentation, right?
Here, here, yeah, so the most part, staff would would take the paperwork and say if they qualify or not, and this is where they fall. And then we see it and say, oh, yeah, they do fall there, and approve it. So it it's it's really, there's, I mean, we're we're, it's it's data collection and budget approval.
Okay.
By both parties, data collection and budget approval.
Sure, on the grant guidelines on that first page, I think, I like the way uh McKinney had on there, on the first page, like who to contact. So once we establish who, I think that would be good to place that on that front page.
Yes.
The title or.
Well, and again.
Contact information and stuff.
I think I think that some of the documentation is going to have to be, because there's also a part there where I reference um the state of Texas and Texas State Comptroller, and I meant to put the IRS, there, you know, that they have to be in good standing with the IRS as opposed, and and the state comptroller, the state of Texas.
Believe, um, when you look it up, you you go to the website for the state comptroller, correct?
Yeah, it's standing, well, you would get that from the comptroller, um, to get, you know, they're, they've got to do reporting on franchise fees and public information reports, and and you can get a, an online letter of good standing, or certificate of account status.
And that's part of their application to to drop off to.
And on the um grant guidelines also, it says registration deadline, application deadline, review, and vote and award. And I know where McKinney had, where it was um application deadline, I think, and then the next one was the um review or something, and I thought, because I don't know what that means, registration deadline, application deadline, I thought, that's a little.
Well, the, that's that's what I was uh talking to earlier, the registration is what they consider their letter of good standing, I mean, their letter of intent.
Right.
They said you have to submit a letter of intent in McKinney, so so, but they didn't have that on there, but if you read in there, it said, submit your letter of intent by this date. I just added it to the very front line.
Okay, so I guess maybe it's not registration deadline then?
Well, yeah.
Because um, letter of intent is strictly for review, I mean, and that aspect was for them to review and be able to say, you know what, you do meet all that criteria, go ahead and submit your application, so.
It's the same thing as a registration, we're just calling it something different. If I register for an event, they have to tell me if I qualify for the event or not, same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, because a letter of intent is me just saying, I intend to do this, and not being qualified, not really qualifying. So I thought the idea of a registration actually says, is is official, is official, because a letter of intent says, I intend to do this.
Yeah, and that, I think.
Getting permission, just I intend to do it.
The way I read it was, letter of intent with them, no, I'm not saying with those, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Letter of intent for them was to submit so that the staff could review, whoever that committee, staff board, whoever was to review it and say, yes, you do go ahead and submit an application. And there is an application deadline, and then there's an application review, and then when they're awarded, that's where I was getting a little.
So they're they're the same thing. If you want to change it, the 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 registration deadline to letter of intent deadline, it can be, it's the same thing. You know what I'm saying? So it's it's, we're we're speaking the same language, we're just calling it two different things.
It sounds better, registration, because that's more.
I think it's.
Informal, you know.
Council, but.
Somebody will look at it.
Because all we're saying is register for, register if you want to, and then the same process.
Richard to be concerned.
They're gonna be, say yes or no that your organization qualifies or doesn't qualify, and your event qualifies or doesn't qualify, and then there, well, then we give them the application, yeah.
Okay, as long as y'all understand, I got you.
Pete, I don't know, this council question or administrative question, um, do you anticipate the need to have like an orientation session for organizations that might be interested to review?
I mean, it it is, it is pretty extensive, and I'd be happy to, I mean, anybody that that picks this up is more than welcome to call me. Um, but it's it's also pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah.
We want this from you, we want this from you, we want this from you. So I'd be happy to go through the process that anybody wants to, I'm sure staff or anybody else will, they need to give in time. Um, that we've always, you know, this whole council's always been willing to make themselves available, but yeah, for the most part, I don't think we have to have an official.
One.
But we can go through with them.
And I was gonna ask, by adopting these guidelines, um, it it, I don't think we've ever had discussion about a core purpose for CBB funds or a mission statement, so by adopting these guidelines, would council be adopting this mission statement and saying, we're in agreement with this miss- mission statement and core purpose?
Well, let's read it out loud, and let's see if council wants to change it.
Okay.
Yeah, gotta find the page real quick.
It it's forty-four.
Okay, let me go back. Well, actually, here's the big deal, I I wanna, I wanna focus to, I mean, we can do the same thing, but I want to focus today on the twenty-one, twenty-twos, and that way we have time to go back and work on the grant.
Yeah, yeah. It's the same verbiage on all, other than the dollar amounts.
Okay.
Okay, so the core purpose um on here states that it's to promote Alice in order to attract visitors and travelers. The mission statement is to generate ec- economic impact by influencing event planners and travelers to choose Alice as their destination.
I'm gonna be perfectly honest, that is pretty much verbatim from what McKinney had, because to me, it hits home. What do we want this money to do for us? What do we want these events to do for us?
Bring people here.
Bring people here, so, I mean, again, it it was, it was, so it was written well enough that I didn't think it needed to be adjusted, but if anybody has anything else.
Well, whenever, I'm sorry, uh, whenever you you're working on a mission statement, you you put those key words in there that 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 hit home, that impact, like on this mission statement, economic impact, economic is the main key word here, and then influencing event sponsors, you know, and planners, influencing and and you're generating economic, I mean, that that's pretty much, you know, what we need, what we're doing.
This mission statement is better than the one we had before.
Well, that's it.
The one that didn't exist?
Well, I just want to make sure to clarify that, because, you know, if we're gonna adopt this, I want to make sure that we're putting it out there, and that we're all okay with that.
Yes.
Um, the other thing was, um, we quoted some numbers, and this is just little stuff, um, I think ours was six percent.
Yeah, that's why I have them in red, just, I mean, yellow to make sure.
To make sure to make that correction. I don't know if the total collected is a thirteen percent, but um, finance, if you can look at those two and and correct them on this document. And. Yeah, it says seven percent, so I just want to make sure that if we do move forward.
Six percent, okay.
Just change it. How about the thirteen percent? What is that, what is, is the other figure? Is it? You, do you have it? Okay.
But they they collect, they collect a a larger portion of it and only certain amounts.
Well, they collect six percent and only two percent.
No, no, they keep some for them too in the state of Texas, that's why they promote the state of Texas.
Right.
So, yeah, and I want to say it's a total of thirteen percent, and we only end up with six of it.
Okay.
Yeah, six for sure is what we collect. It's on page forty-eight.
Forty-five?
Mine is forty-eight, let's see.
It's forty-five.
Well, no, because you're on a, you're on a.
Twenty-two, twenty.
You have to look here.
But they all have the same.
Oh, yeah, it is forty-eight.
Muscle medals.
Okay.
And I and I, and we can get together and make sure we finalize the document.
Just to note that we want to make sure that that.
No, with with the minimal corrections, as talked about by council.
Okay, and um, see. And then on the um, it said, these caps are up to values and may be adjusted down in accordance with the application count, I just.
The the reason I put that in here, and is in both the twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-one, is because if we have our dollar limit, let's say it's thirty thousand for next year, and we have twenty people apply, but we want to make sure they all get a portion of it, we can adjust them down so that everybody can get a smaller amount, as opposed to saying, three people aren't getting anything, even though they qualify.
Uh-huh, okay.
Right, so, and those, and those numbers can uh obviously change in, when you think about, uh, if one one organization, and I'm getting in the weeds here, but if one organization doesn't meet their hundred rooms and frees up some money, we may be able to give it back to some of these other organizations.
And when he's talking about rooms, he's talking like, let's say somebody comes, stays on a Friday for the Friday night event, and then Saturday, they stay also, you know, it's it's two rooms.
That's kind of is two.
Right.
Even though it's the same person, that it, that is, in the state of Texas, that's considered two.
Two.
So as long as you occupy the room, that is an occupancy, so, not the same.
No, and you already mentioned about the performance agreement, you're waiting for a copy of that.
Yes, yes.
So that will be inserted into our, if this is adopted, okay. Um, you answered about the registration, application dates and stuff, um, let's see.
And then there's a slight change on the guidelines also for, where it says the uh grant guidelines, where we're gonna remove the state of Texas, and just loo- and just leave it, say, the Texas State Comptroller's office. So that's a slight change that needs to be announced too, so when we accept it, what changes that can be updated as well.
And I think those.
Yeah, grant guidelines.
They file their five oh and C three, not with the comptroller's office, but.
The IRS.
No, with the secretary of state.
Secretary of state, okay.
So I would just leave it as you have.
Okay, cool, perfect.
Something the comptroller has that might be.
There's a reason why it's in.
Maybe it's predatory, maybe it's not the state of Texas and stuff.
Okay, perfect. Okay, then we'll leave that as being. Thank you, John.
There was one uh sentence, once registrations are reviewed, the qualified organizations will be contacted and applications while be distributed.
While instead of while?
Yeah.
Okay, what page was that on, so we can get it corrected?
Forty-seven of the guidelines for twenty-two to twenty-three.
Title.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh. Where's that? I'm sorry, say again?
Uh, page forty-seven of the twenty-two to twenty-three.
Chuck, can you just point to it so I can see?
Uh, right here.
Okay, so I know where to look, I mean.
It's the second paragraph at the end.
Right before the grant application review process, right above that bold.
Okay, my my numbers are different. Yeah, my numbers are different.
It's in um fiscal.
Application.
What's the bottom, the bottom number says there, forty-seven?
Forty-seven.
See, forty-seven, I think it's.
Of the twenty-two to twenty-three.
It's the application process, the application process.
Oh, you're in the.
I'm in twenty-two to twenty-three, and it's while, is that a will?
Page fifty.
Page fifty. It's page fifty for us on electric, sorry.
Always ahead of us.
Will, all right, gotcha.
Okay, um, the other thing that it said, um, that we would supply grant logos and stuff, so I wanted to know, is that something that we're gonna work on in the future?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you.
Okay.
Right now, this Visit Alice logo type of thing, I just threw that together, because it's an initiative, um, you know what I mean? Uh, that grant that we can kind of, we can't, we're not doing the chamber logo anymore, because obviously that one doesn't exist any longer, so we need to come up with something.
The other thing it references is the uh Visit Alice Fund, so if we need to change that, because it's named, whatever that line item is, I think if we want to do that, and if we adopt this, to state that in there that we're gonna.
Well, I think, I think if we openly state right now that the the idea behind the Visit Alice Fund is this initiative, is this initiative, yes. Yeah, is this initiative, and how much we're saying we have in there, that's our, that's our fund balance, you know what I mean, not actually creating a fund, we don't necessarily, we want to go out and do that, but yeah. This is just the the concept of an initiative and the funding that's behind it.
Okay, I was just saying, since it references, if we could, if y'all wanted to, if to create the output page.
And I know that's, there's just so much to process and.
That's why I stated with changes, because there's gonna be a lot of changes.
And and the thing is, is if we never do it, it'll never happen.
Right.
We'll start somewhere.
Gotta start somewhere, yes.
Right now, while we have it in front of us, that's the only reason I'm addressing it.
Oh, no, 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 that's what we need to do, we need to.
Strange.
It sits some, I know that on the McKinney one, there was uh missing where and how to apply page. Um, I was wondering, it was left out, but I didn't know if you wanted to do that.
The reason I kind of said that was because if we, in the next year's process, we're gonna contact the people who can apply through the registration process. So we're not really just necessarily opening the doors for everybody to apply for the grant, because now they need to register in advance to make sure that they qualify for.
I think that was just the contact information, so.
And we can always add that.
Add that, okay.
Once we know who Michael assigns. And I think that we should also uh accept now, as part of the changes, that we will be adding contact information or altering contact information as we move forward on these documentation, um, because of Michael's staff, staffing decisions.
And on the application, grant application, um, it said, please submit the application as follows, it says, hard copy and thumb drive, did that, did you mean to, and or, or?
Hard copy is printed.
Yeah, it says, hard copy and thumb drive delivered to, so I didn't know.
Oh, okay, I should say or instead of and.
Okay.
What page was that on yours, so I can add three?
Pages, mine's fifty-two on the application, sorry, fifty-five?
It's gonna be fifty-five for us.
Somewhere around fifty-five.
Yeah. Now, we're not gonna finalize, we're gonna find, we're looking at really finalizing the twenty-twenty-ones, and any changes we make to the twenty-twenty-one, we can say that we're gonna. we can say that we're gonna be carrying over the twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, cuz it's pretty much the same for.
Yes, yes. And it's pretty much exactly the same for both of them. We just changed some of the numbers to try to get it out.
On that next paragraph, um, it says if you're interested in being applying for visit Alice grant funding, I thought that might have, I think it should have been something, meant something different.
Where was that at?
Same page fifty-five.
Okay. If, if interesting. Oh, no, I'm, I'm, the reason is, is because I'm at the twenty-twenty-one cuz I wanna get that altered so that we can get it out. I go backwards. Let me go back. Yeah, I didn't. It's not there, it's different on that page.
Yeah.
Uh, interesting applying.
Right here. You're interested in being applying or being considered or applying, which one?
In applying, okay. Applying, okay. I got the change here.
I was gonna ask on the grant application also, um, on the contact for communication between city of Alice and organization. It has a website URL where event will be promoted. Should we ask all with all URL? Like if they have other.
I mean, even if it's a Facebook page, it's a URL.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you're talking like social media or whatever.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so. I'm not, I'm not that, uh, like Sally and stuff about.
And if you go to the very next page on the application, it identified tourism-related document, it says, uh, URL where the event will be promoted, um, yes, that's where you're reading. I could have sworn, I'm on, I honestly, that I had in parentheses underneath the line, include Facebook, Instagram, whatever. You know what I mean? But I can add that back on there cuz it was just a small underneath it. But since it's a table, it probably got removed when I was creating the doc, when I was finalizing the document. But I can add that.
There was, and I don't have page, on, um, page fifty-eight on mine for the twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a notation at, on the McKinney form for the grant application and I was, it, it was missing on this one and I was just wondering if that was something that.
Which notation was that?
I'm trying to remember where I wrote it. It was page eight of eight on theirs.
Right there, go back.
You're looking at this page.
What's their, can you show me their page? Do you have it there for me or no?
Thought I had printed it, but I put seven of seven, not. I have to go back and look. I don't think I wrote it.
It's fifty-nine on yours, maybe.
Yeah, I have to go back.
She's talking about the original where we use as a template McKinney.
Oh, oh, it was something that.
I may have it on. Cuz I had opened it earlier. Wanna answer all your questions, so let me. Do you wanna add, move on to the next one and we can go from there while I look this up?
I had wrote on your fund awarded on the acknowledgements, but. I had questioned that, but I don't know why.
Come on, baby.
There was one that I thought it contradicted on the, uh, acknowledgements, but it said we can always. Funds awarded for approved applications are funded primarily on a reimbursement basis, but in cases of longstanding event, not exceed fifty percent. I think that's okay. I think we addressed that one earlier. I think that's it for the ones that I, um, then I saw the other ones, they were pretty much all the same. I think it'll touch.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
It was a lot.
So.
But thank y'all for bringing it forward. Yeah, both of you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. But I guess, uh, the how to apply. Oh, you said it was on the application. Sorry, I opened the wrong document.
Yeah, it's in the application.
So let's let that one open. Um, while, while this opens so that we can go back to the question that was brought forward by the mayor here. Did, during discussions, during discussions, the idea of changing the amount was brought up by several people, okay? Do we want to do that for this year? I'm really talking about this year. Uh, I think we've got the, the just of it, we're looking for approval for this year. Right now, we have the ten thousand dollars with a twenty-five thousand dollar cap. Twenty-five hundred, I'm sorry, twenty-five hundred, that would have been, how do we do that? That doesn't even work. Um, twenty-five hundred dollar cap. Um, is there an altera, uh, you know, any?
I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm strongly for bumping that the, the maximum cap to five thousand, given that we do have twenty-five thousand available. And, uh, that's just what I think, you know, cuz we, we went through all this work, might as well help the community, you know, get something going, you know, so. And in worst case, you know, uh, this is kind of, we're still kind of open here with, with, uh, what we're doing and and we can always go back and do a small, uh, budget amendment if we need to.
If we need to.
Might not even need to, you know, it just depends, you know, I mean, five thousand, I mean, maybe we do, maybe we have four people come up and to get the five is gonna be hard because you've still gotta, you have to have a big event, you know, forty plus rooms, so.
Right, exactly.
Well, and that's. I don't think it would hurt, but.
I think that's the next question is if that we, if we decide to alter that, the matrix that's on page sixty-eight.
That would have to change.
And that we stop at four, thirty-one rooms at twenty-five hundred, do we want to focus more on adding a few more rooms to make them be able to qualify for that larger amount?
Sure.
So, you know, uh.
That would be the, the right thing to do, yeah.
I, I, that's, I agree with that. So we can go.
Just for the year.
Thirty-one, and we can even just go thirty-one to, to forty rooms would be the same twenty-five hundred and then go forty-one and up hits that, that five thousand dollar mark. And it really gives them an opportunity to hit something home this first year. And then if they turn in all their paperwork, it makes it easier for everybody next year, including them, because they've already written everything. They've already done everything. They've already supplied everything once before. So.
Question.
Shoot.
Maybe a weird question, but still a question.
No.
Um, a lot of times during the time, timeframes that we're having these events, a lot of times there's other things going on in the community. And it happens to us because we get spillover from Corpus. They come into the town because there aren't enough rooms available on Corpus, so they come to Alice, they come to Kingsville. Now, let's say the opposite being true, that if we have spillover that has to go to Corpus, will they be penalized for that or will that be included as part of their?
That doesn't.
As long as there's verification.
No, no, it does not count because it's about generating hotel stays in the city of Alice. That's how the hot funds get renewed. That's how we get people to eat at our hotels. That's a great question. That's how we get people to eat at our hotels and it'll be people to fuel up before they go home or, or whatever. It, Alice matters. Alice hotels matter, you know what I mean? So that's what it comes down to. But that's a good question because yes, there is spillover. And to the same point, we hope we can get them to fill out, you know. On that little form, I don't know if you saw it at the very end of all the documentation that, that was supplied to y'all. It says there, if you wanna help out your, your local nonprofits, fill this out, you know, so.
Yeah, it does.
And it behooves the, the hotel owners, right? Because I mean, it's just kind of recirculating the money back into the system and promoting.
Promoting tourism.
Oh, I think one of the notes that you may be talking about was an acknowledgement, um, saying, uh, what the, uh, the, uh, the board of directors would be doing.
I don't remember.
May, maybe that was it.
I don't recall.
And it was one of, just one or two notes that I had removed out of there because we're removing the idea of a board of directors and now we can only start it back later.
I don't recall, but.
But if you wanna bring it back at a later time and make sure that we put it in the twenty-twenty-two one and even update the current one, please feel free to. So.
Real quick, uh, you mentioned, uh, Gabriel, um, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety last year, right? Okay, that was a COVID year, correct? I mean, during, some of that was COVID, so we're expecting more is coming. Right? We'll be good.
So, but we can only spend the money we earn.
Of course.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that it's, it's gonna get better.
Especially if we put it out there for them to actually do more.
Yes.
Get on more.
And only if it's reclaimed, I mean, because these folks have to, these organizers have to kind of come back with proof to say that we did stay here and here it is, if not, then it's on them. Just being, keeping it honest and fair.
No further questions. I'll entertain a motion for this agenda item.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a, a convention and visitors bureau grant application process with stated changes.
For the year of twenty.
For the year of twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, please.
Oh, we're not doing it for both?
I, I don't wanna.
You want two, two separate agendas? I mean, uh.
No, I think that we, I think we wanna be able to bring it back and, and, I mean, we can definitely do it. I mean, if y'all want to, I'm, I'm for it cuz we, we're there.
Well, Doc, well, you're gonna make the changes to both.
Yes, I'm gonna make the changes to both.
It's, what do you think? I don't know.
Really, really.
One has a different dollar amount.
Yeah.
Pretty much the only difference, the, the verbiage and.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would say both.
Okay. The guidelines and our application, so I apologize for cutting you off.
Okay.
Yeah, I like, I like double approval of stuff that I've worked on. A lot of effort in.
Just asking, um, since we're adopting guidelines, I mean, we're just adopting the guidelines and the application process has the same verbiage for both with, whether it's for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty, whatever it is. Um, so we don't necessarily, other than have to state maybe the adjustment on the dollar amount on the application, grant application, or what's the best, I'm asking, what's the best way to adopt this? To make it clean and clear.
Amounts, if I understand correctly, your amounts differ in the guidelines from year to year. And so you can approve, you're gonna approve the application in the guidelines and you do it, you need to do it year by year as to the amount suggests. You could say, we can approve the application forever and then you come in and.
But, but she's, but then she was, I think when Councilmember Bones was talking about, uh, 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 putting the motion on table, she was saying with, with changes, said changes, like.
The grant application process with changes.
And this is the way that I understood it, is that the grant application and guidelines with the changes is made for the years. She was gonna go through the years, it was twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. That fashion for each one of those years. And I think that'd be sufficient. Provided it changes, if it's made, or we start to have problems, I would bring it back to council.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure it's on the same page.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, I understand. Um, once again, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, um, a convention and visitors bureau grant application process with stated changes. For both years.
Need the years or no?
You want me to say the years, twenty-twenty-one? Okay, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two and also twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
With stated amount.
With stated changes, which include the amounts.
All right.
So.
Okay. We're good. We have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Okay.
Okay, now we move on to agenda item number eleven.
Bring that dog back in here.
Okay, holding public hearing. To discuss, consider and act upon adopting an ordinance to rezone Leon addition lot one known as vacant lot beam station road from B three business district to R six mo- mobile home subdivision as shown by map records, volume thirteen and thereof recorded in map records, Jimwells County, Texas. Okay, so it's asking for a public hearing. I will open our public hearing at this time. It is six sixteen P M.
B three and they're requesting to go to a V, a R six, which would allow for a mobile home. This is a property right behind a, uh, gas station that borders a residential area on Beam Station Road. It did go to planning and zoning, the letters were all sent out. Were, uh, there was only one, uh, uh, comment or, or, uh, letter that was returned to us with some comments and the comments, uh, were, uh, not, not, not against it. He was, it was more of a civil matter between a property line uh, that he was questioning. So, uh, he wasn't necessarily against the, 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 the rezone. He was just trying to get some clarification on where his property lines were. Uh, but aside from that, there were no other objections to the, the rezone.
So anyone wishing to speak on this, if you'd like to step forward and, and speak on this agenda item, you're welcome to. As there appears to be no one to step forward to speak in reference to this agenda item, we will close this public hearing. It is six eighteen P M. Um, council, do you have any questions in reference to this agenda item?
Mayor, I do not. I have no question.
Mister Chris, no, Mister Molina?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mister Burke?
No, ma'am, thank you.
No, thank you, Mayor.
I have a question on this one. Um, on the shaded areas that we had in our packet. It had, um, I was, what is that, uh, R, what is it saying? I couldn't, I couldn't make it out. It says R what right here? On that red shaded area.
I don't know what you're looking at.
Is it R four?
Uh, it was probably the rest of the area, I believe it's an R, R three.
Uh, ninety-three?
Looks like an R nine.
Yeah, I was gonna say R six, I don't know, it's hard to tell.
I couldn't make it out. What is that?
Maybe an F.
Is it R four?
Which, which one are you?
Right here. Yeah, that one right there. What do you see there?
R three.
R three.
R three.
And R three is what?
Uh, resident, single family.
Single family.
Yeah.
So, um, it looks like, and I'm not sure, you can tell me this, Patrick. Um, like, is a part of half or like, uh, part of the front part of that property already residential? And the back part is zoned, the B three?
No, it should all be the same. Where are you seeing that?
Well, because I was trying to just look at it, but I was just asking.
It's one lot.
Yeah, but you see how this is mapped out? Cuz it's all B three right here, B three all right here. This is where this lot sits. So a portion of the front part of it looks like it's the residential and this part of it is part of, cuz it's this one right here. Here's the. How is this one I hear? Okay, it's this way, right? Right? No, no, it's this way, okay. So, um, here's that property, here's this one right here, right? This is all right here. So this property ends up like right there. So if it's right here, that's what I was asking. I was just wondering. This is the vacant lot. This is the vacant lot.
True.
Okay, the vacant lot is right here. Right here?
The, 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 the roadway is right there.
This is beams, no, no, what I'm saying is if you were to reference a point, like, um, it's right here. So this part, that's why I was asking, part of it is residential and the back part is B three? Do you know, you see what I'm saying?
See what you mean. I, I don't think that's the, that's the lot.
But it's separated.
Yeah.
And, well, this one doesn't separate it.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at a different lot.
Well, this is not the lot here.
No, this is the lot.
This one right here?
Yeah, and I say, well, this is that, this is the drive-through, right?
Yes, that's the drive-through.
And I'm saying like the drive-through is halfway right here. So if the drive-through is all this right here, it's halfway, it's part of this. That's why I was asking if it's part residential and then the rest of it's. That's.
That's this?
Yeah.
Is that this?
No. That's. That's part of it, this isn't, the lines aren't all the same. That's what I was asking, but I mean, I guess.
It's the entire lot. Where, where are those, on that map, I can't tell you which.
Okay.
The entire platted lot.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure. Mister Burke, any questions?
No ma'am.
Mrs. Bowen? No, okay. Okay. I was just wondering, cuz then if we change it, I wanna make sure we're changing.
We're not cutting something off.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Cuz you don't see it, there's no aerial, so you just kinda.
Yeah, so. I want to just make sure.
Yeah.
You're pretty confident.
It's, yeah, I'm pretty confident, it's the entire lot, wha- whatever that recorded, platted lot is, uh, that's what's being rezoned.
Okay.
If there's no further questions, um, I'll entertain a motion for this agenda item.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopting an ordinance to rezone Leon Edition Lot One, known as vacant lot Beam Station Road, from a B three Business District to an R six Mobile Home Subdivision, as shown on map records, volume thirteen and thereof, recorded in map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll move on to agenda item number twelve. This does consider and act upon request to approve a final plat zero point zero nine zero four acres out of lots four and five, block four, Adams Presnel Farm Track, as shown on the map, map recorded in volume one, page twelve, map records of Jimwells County, Texas, and described in a deed recorded in volume twelve zero three, page one twenty two and volume five five three, page one oh four. Deed records of Jimwells County, Texas.
This property is what we know as Humple, uh, Physical Therapy thirteen oh two, East Fifth Street. They're, uh, what they're seeking to do is just to record their plat, it's not recorded. So this is a final plat, uh, they're doing some work to their, their driveway and parking lot in order, in order to do that and have it recorded properly, uh, they had to go through this process, so that's what we're doing, there's no changes being made to it other than just renovations to the parking lot.
Hey, council, any questions, uh, Mrs. Bowen? No, thank you. This one's fine. Mister Burke?
No, appreciate it, thank you.
Mister Molina?
No. Thank you.
Mister Chris?
No ma'am.
Okay.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
You can, I, I know it's just a replat, um, but when I was bringing up the tax records on here, they all have the same legal, did you see that?
Same legal description? Uh, no, I didn't see that.
You want, you wanna look at this real quick? Um, this is for, this is thirteen oh two, correct?
Thirteen oh two.
And it says Adam Presnel Farm Tracks, lots four and five, block four. The only difference is, of course, the acreage size, so I was just, I'm just asking, this one's for thirteen, um, thirteen fifteen, East Fifth Street. And that one's is Adams Presnel Farms Tracks, lot four and five, block four, same legal, other than the, the acreage. Um, this one is for fifteen oh one, East Main Street. Same, same legal.
Are you pulling up the, the county appraisal stuff?
Yes.
Information?
Yes.
Sometime their, their legal is, is, uh, the same, but the deed records might be different.
I mean. Um, yeah, the, the only one that was different, um, this one did specify track one and the other one specified part of something, so I just wanted to know if it's being replatted. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, that's why they go by the deed records, not, not by the.
I couldn't see, it's kind of little, do you see the deed, what, what is being recorded as?
No, you would have to, uh, well, is it?
Isn't it on the plat?
Yes, it's, it's always on the plat in the description.
So what, what legal deed or? Can you see it? I can't see it. Even with my glasses, I couldn't see it.
I actually used my phone and, and took like a picture, but I zoomed in, so I could see it because it's very hard.
Oh, there's.
See, it's, uh, what does it say?
The D track?
Yeah, it's the, it's the actual, um, description, that's, those are the notes, where did I find it, it's, oh, it's up here. But you have a point there, I mean, you wanna make sure it's right, but I'm sure the.
What did I do? I kept that. And I kept the case. Let me see.
Survey is point nine oh four acres.
Yes.
That's what shows that that's appropriate, not this, not.
Not that necessarily.
Right, we always go by the deeds.
The appraisal district uses, that's their shorthand version of a legal description.
It's confusing. As long as, um, they're referencing the point nine zero four, they have the same legal as all other, four other properties then, so that's okay.
Well, the, the difference is gonna be the acreage, but this fifteen, what is fifteen oh one? Well, that's all it's twenty acres.
Yeah, okay, as long as. As long as y'all know, I just wanted to double check.
That's, that's the real estate agent, you're trying to get it figured right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I use my phone and zoom, cuz my eyes are bad too, I forgot my glasses.
Okay.
So Mister Lemon, this is, um, go ahead to it, like ask.
They're plating.
They're other plating, yeah, they're plating.
Well, it was unplated, right, so?
Is it unplated?
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to take a motion. Approving a final plat point nine oh four acres out of lot four and block four, Adams Presnel Farm Track.
As shown on map, recorded in volume one, page twelve, map records of Jimwells County, Texas, and described in a deed recorded in volume twelve oh three. Page one twenty two, volume five five three, page one oh four, deed records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number thirteen, hear and discuss presentation from Alice Fire Department, Fire Chief Patrick Thomas, regarding statistics for third quarter calls for service.
Mayor, council.
So we have a separate pamphlet, right?
Yes, I believe it was already.
It was given to linear review.
So you have before you the, the third quarter statistics for, uh, the Alice Fire Department's responses. And, uh, just a brief overview, we did have an increase of thirty five calls total for this same time last year. Uh, we're still currently on track to have one of our busiest years that we've had in probably the last ten to fifteen years. Primarily the, the, when, when you, when I say busier year, busier calls, I mean, total cost for, uh, total cost for service. And not specifically to fire, you're fine, uh, not specifically to fire, our fires are staying about the same, we are busier, but that's primarily due to the medical responses. Um, and a big, uh, contributor that has been COVID to this last year, so, and that's the, the big increase. Aside from that, I, we are looking closely at the, the, uh, calls out in the county, we, we have seen an increase, not on the fire, but again, on the medical side. Uh, there've been requests from local, so we, we're, we're watching that. Aside from that, everything else still seems to be pretty much on par. You know, we did see an increase in, in the, uh, when we look at the causes of the fires, we're look, we're seeing an increase in the amount of cooking fires that we have, so we're working on addressing that, uh, through our prevention efforts, so you'll see some, some, uh, media, uh, releases coming out about, uh, cooking fires and, and how to, uh, slow those down a little bit, so we can try to minimize those, but coolest call.
I was gonna say with, um, the winter months coming, if we have also education for the, you know, the.
We will preemptively, we'll, we'll, we'll put that information out, uh, you know, it, that's not reactive, it's more pre- preventive, cuz, you know, we haven't had those fires, but what we are seeing is the cooking fires, so we wanna, we wanna start, try to, uh, slow that down.
Speaking of cooking fires, it might not be idea, might not be a bad idea for y'all to do a little PSA about turkey fryers. Coming up in the next week.
So scary.
Drop it in there.
Oh.
So, so let's, uh.
And, and his wife has nine one one on speed dial.
Uh, other than that, that is my report for this, uh, quarter.
Awesome, thank you, Patrick.
Chief, yes.
Thank you to you.
I have a question.
Don't leave.
Oh, no, here it is.
I, I have a question on the nine one one process. When someone dials nine one one, they go to dispatch.
Yes ma'am.
It's my understanding it's to the police dispatch?
Yes, if you are in the city limits and you hit the proper tower, it will.
Okay.
Police dispatch.
What would be the reason that a nine one one call would be transferred at least twice within a call?
Uh, there could be a phone line issue with the nine one one system, and so it automatically rolls over to the next nearest, uh, dispatching center.
But if the nine one one dispatcher is answering the questions and everything and say, hold on, let me patch you through to another dispatch, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, if it's a medical call, they may be transferring him over to a medical dispatcher.
It was a medical call.
So then, yeah, what, what happens is our, our dispatchers are not medical dispatchers, so we have that, that's part of our EMS, uh, contract, they provide medical dispatch. So that's somebody who can, who can, uh, over the phone, guide them with pre-arrival instructions for, uh, medical response.
So that's the reason for the transfer, okay, well, I was just curious, cuz we actually used nine one one recently with my granddaughter. That was the only question I had, but they were there on time, did an excellent job, and I'm so thankful.
Yeah, that's what they'll do, and, and a lot of times it's pre-arrival instructions, uh, you know, God forbid there need to be CPR or something like that, when they can, they can guide that over the phone.
That's wonderful, good to know, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm done, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Agenda item number fourteen, hear and discuss presentation from Alice Police Chief Eden Garcia, regarding statistics for third quarter calls for service, arrest and citation information within the city of Alice.
So let me, um, apologize, cuz I didn't have this packet for you, so, uh, I didn't get it to you in a timely manner, so that's my fault. I apologize for that. Um, just real quick, I'm gonna go over some numbers, I know you've been sitting with a little off. Uh, for the last, looking at the last three months, Alice Police Department, total number of calls for service for the past three months, four thousand two hundred and seventy two. Actual reports completed, so just because we go to call doesn't mean that we're gonna make a report, two thousand nine hundred and sixty five. From those two thousand nine hundred and sixty five, major cases referred to our Criminal Investigation Division was two hundred and forty. Total arrests by our patrol division, three hundred and forty six, total narcotics arrests, it's thirty seven, however, that number is wrong, I verified it today, it's seventy one.
Wow.
Wow.
Uh, one of the things we've been having some issues with in our community are juveniles. So, uh, in the last three months, we've arrested, or, uh, thirty juveniles, seventeen detained and transported to detention center. Uh, thirteen were released, now we don't make those decisions, they go through a system, through the, uh, juvenile probation. Uh, the estimated time when an officer arrests a juvenile is two to three hours, naturally, we have them here at the police department, there's a process that takes place. So now if they get sent to a facility or detention center, it may be in Stark County, it may be in Sinton, sometimes we always hope for Sinton, cuz it's, it's close and only an hour drive, but sometimes we have to take them to Stark County, that's gonna take us three to four hours. Uh, so that officer has to go and, and, and usually JPO has been really good about sending someone with us. Uh, that way we don't send two officers, and that keeps two officers off the street, but it, it's gonna last all day. So that's why, so those are some of the things I'd like you all to, uh, take into consideration when we're dealing with juveniles. So those are some of the numbers, uh, citations, as you know, the first quarter we had five hundred and forty two, second was fourteen oh one, and here lately, fourteen, uh, one thousand four hundred and thirty two. Criminal Investigation Division, the recovered stolen properties estimated at thirty three thousand dollars. We've conducted four search warrants, actually, there was another one conducted today, uh, and that's, that's all I'll say about that. Uh, phone search warrants, there was a total of thirteen, so it's pretty cool. Uh, in the past, we do an investigation, we get your phone, we can, even though you say, well, I'm gonna delete everything in my phone, you, we, we have the, the, the capability to retrieve all that information. So usually in the past, we'd have to drive to Harlingen, or we'd have to go to Corpus, or Sinton also has a division that does that. But, so we were always having an outsource in order to get this done, but now we can do it in-house. So, uh, forensic, that part of the forensic, uh, investigation can be done in-house, we have the capability, we have our people that are certified now, so that is something that's pretty cool, because now everything can be done in-house, other agencies can come to us and we can help them download the telephones. Uh, CID obtained a total of eighty eight arrest warrants. Uh, the two hundred and thirty cases referred to CID juvenile were responsible for fifty four. Uh, I, I know we, we've had some issues at the school, there was a, and here very quickly, three out of the five school threats resulted in the arrest of an individual. The other two resulted in leads being exhausted, but school remains safe, so we did do a thorough search of our schools. Uh, sometimes even at the high school, I mean, there was times it went into lockdown, so we did our searches then. Uh, and everything came out fine, but we still do our due diligence, and the school has done a great job also on that end. Uh, eight criminal offense reports have been turned over to ATF and DEA, there are other cases currently pending, so there are still quite a few cases pending out there, uh, that are going, there's more that I'd love to talk to you, but you will see it in time. Uh, ninety nine cases have been closed by CID and referred to prosecutor for review. So that is something that we are really doing, is pushing, is getting these cases out there, old cases that have been pending, making sure we close them up and we send them off along with all our new cases, so you imagine it's, it's, there's quite a few. Uh, these are the warrants that we, we've conducted in the first quarter, second quarter, and our third quarter, you see the numbers, how far, how high they've come, so it's pretty cool. Guys have done a great job. Uh, just real quick, some Alice Police, these are some of the highlights, so, you know, we had Halloween, just like to brag about the department, the guys, they did a great job. So we had the festival downtown, we had a great group of, of people, of citizens that came out. Uh, I believe we had, we put our number, it had to have been over three thousand, uh, we had a total of eighteen officers out there. Jimwells County was very, very helpful, our constable's department was out there also helping us, but, uh, we had one incident, and it was a young, it was a juvenile, we just ran him off home, other than that, it was, it was a great time, everybody enjoyed themselves. Uh, during trick or treat, uh, we had seventeen officers, actually PD officers patrolling, including, uh, my, all my lieutenants, all our command staff was out, including myself. Uh, we had zero incidents, that was pretty cool, uh, it was a great job, and we got to walk the streets and we got to see a lot of the people. And so they were pretty happy about that. And just finish real quickly with our T Q advisory committee, so every year we have to have an advisor, uh, advisory committee, it's gotta come, uh, come into play to, uh, do the training, so they evaluate our trainings and, and so forth. So this is something that I wanted to become a useful tool for us, I know it's not our stats, but I just wanted to throw it out there, that, uh, we are planning on really utilizing our, our committee to really focus on our training, so. That's pretty much it, any questions, anything I can help you with?
I'm gonna wait till you walk away and call you back. Just kidding. No, thank you, and, and I'm so excited to see Ricky, I think that's her name. Like I said, she reminds me of Kila when my, you know, my son's canine, so I'm just real excited, I love him.
We're so excited to have her, so, and, and.
Thank you for that.
Officer Manuel Garcia's been a great asset, and he's gonna be a great canine, he's gonna grow up to be a fine officer.
Definitely.
And, uh, so that's what I'm more excited.
Yes, definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number fifteen, here, status report on October twenty one month and financial statements and summary of funds and delivery of October twenty twenty one check registers.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Hello.
Like the chief said, I know y'all been here for a while, so I'll just point this points for you. Uh, as you know, we're in our first month of a new fiscal year, so I know this isn't your first time here, but it is for myself, so some of these slides might be a little concerning, but it's just because of the way the accounting, how we do our accounting for the city, so we'll talk through them if you have questions, we'll answer them real quickly. So again, financials for the first month ending October thirty first, twenty twenty one, the general fund revenues are two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seven year to date. Property tax budget was two hundred and forty three thousand, forty four dollars, and right now we're showing no revenue for that. Sales tax was budgeted at four hundred and forty thousand, and again, no collection for this, it's, it's basically like the timing, it's, the, the collections we received were for prior years, and, and it's really something that's out of our control, it's just, like I mentioned before, it's the way things run. Exhibit B, we have our M and O and INS of five thousand two hundred and thirty six, last year we had sixty nine thousand sixty six. Exhibit C, sales tax budget versus actual. This includes the month of September, September's collection was five hundred and twenty six thousand, five hundred and eighteen. Two thousand twenty-one budget was five million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, and we have an actual five million, five hundred and eighty-four, seven hundred and seventy-two. So we were over budget, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five seventy-two. Exhibit D, we have actual twenty twenty-one versus actual twenty twenty. We have an increase of two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifty-two dollars over previous year-to-date. Going back to exhibit A. Occupational and mixed beverage is showing at two percent. Franchise license and permits is at one point seven five percent. Lines and forfeits at just over eight and a half percent. Miscellaneous revenues as, along with forfeits is eight and a half percent, and interfund transfers is eight point three one percent. Exhibit E is the general fund expenditures. Year-to-date, we have a million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty. Some of the larger departments show the following. General service is at twenty-eight percent. This is one of those that I mentioned before, is because it's beginning of the fiscal year. We're paying items for the year at the beginning, so it's hitting all at once. And for general service, that was one hundred and fifty thousand for TML insurance. So that's, that's a big capture right there. Fire Department is showing nine point three one percent. That one shows over budget, and Patrick might be able to talk to this, but right now we have a couple of guys and a truck, I believe, working in the valley, and it's part of grant fund that will be reimbursed. But at this time, we're, we're showing as expense, and every hour that they're over there, it's overtime pay. And also the guys that are here that are covering for those guys are also on overtime pay, but this will all be reimbursed. But again, it's showing as expense over budget. And then Police Department is coming at five point six four percent. Street maintenance is at seven point nine two percent. Parks and playgrounds is at six point four percent, and public health is at eight point eight eight six percent. Exhibit F, revenues and expenditures for the month. General fund, we show a negative seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, one twenty-three to go with those expenditures at the beginning of the year. Solid waste, fourteen thousand, nine hundred. Utility fund, a hundred and five thousand, six forty-three. Airport fund is a negative nineteen, fifteen thousand, nine fifty-seven, and that's with the transfer. Golf course fund is at fifteen thousand, one sixty-eight, with the transfer. And hotel occupancy is at a negative four thousand, seven forty-two. And the multi-use complex is coming as a negative twelve thousand, four fifty-nine with the transfer. The final slide is the revenue over expenditures comparing twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. General fund was at a negative three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight forty-two last year, and this year we're showing the negative seven hundred and seventy-three, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Solid waste was a hundred and twenty thousand, one thirty, and now we're at fourteen thousand, nine hundred. Utility fund is, was four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eighty-four, and now we're at a hundred and five thousand, six forty-three. The airport fund was a two thousand, seven ninety-four. We're coming at a negative nineteen thousand, five ninety-seven. Golf course fund was at twenty thousand, seventy-nine dollars, and now we're at fifteen thousand, one sixty-eight. Hotel occupancy was a negative thousand, fifty-three, and now we're at four thousand, negative four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. And the final one is a multi-use was at sixteen thousand, three sixty-five, and we're showing a negative twelve thousand, four fifty-nine. And again, like I said, I mean, you've been through these before. It's because of a brand-new fiscal year, so it looks concerning, but it really shouldn't be. Thank you.
Hey, Counsel, any questions? Uh, Mrs. Bowen?
Not at this time.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Hey, Mr. Molina?
No.
Mr. Chris?
No ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, wait.
I just thought, I wanted to ask you, on the command center, it showed the, um, remodeling and outfitting.
Police Chief Lee.
Do you know what that was?
Exactly what, uh, I believe what that's meaning, right? So the PD, the, the remodel that we're doing.
For the, the armory or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, no, not the armory.
For what, PD?
Actual.
Oh, for the PD.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm lost somewhere. I'm pointing.
I was like, what? Huh?
Oh, is that yours? What's?
Okay.
Looking at where, uh, Mayor, on the...
The one highlighted under...
One twenty-five, page one twenty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, just wanted to ask, and then there was a purchase of an enclosed trailer. What was that? What was your question? I'm sorry.
The enclosed trailer, I did see that, uh, that was for...
The enclosed trailer on, uh, is that the one for...
For codes, codes?
For codes?
Yes. The enclosed trailer?
There's one, there's one that's in that center.
Enclosed trailer? Okay, so to store or something? Okay. Oh, okay. Okay. There was that. Okay. Um... Rinko Services Incorporated is who? What is it?
It's, that is...
Who's that? Tess?
Right, or the COVID, the COVID...
No, they're the sanitation.
Ah, that's right. Oh, okay. And then the, um, IRP for TML, what's that?
That's liability property insurance.
Oh, okay.
That's the one fifty.
What was three hundred and ninety-nine thousand?
It's all the funds, it's...
Combined.
Okay.
We split it out by fund.
Gotcha.
One fifty was from the general fund.
Okay.
Of that.
I think that was it. Just those. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Vanessa.
Yes, thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody in the department.
Everybody.
Everybody, everybody.
Okay, so agenda item number sixteen. The City Council may enter into closed or executive session to discuss the following pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one. Consultation with attorney to secure legal advice and counsel related, but not limited to negotiations of lease between YMCA and City of Alice. Uh, number two, section five five one point zero seven two, Texas Government Code, discussions about the value of leased real property multi-use complex located at seven twenty-three FM fifteen fifty-four, Alice, Texas. It is now six forty-nine PM, and we will enter into executive session.
Because he just came back from...
Agenda item number seventeen. Return to open session and take any action necessary as a result of discussions in preceding agenda item number sixteen pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one. Consultation with attorney to secure legal advice and counsel related, but not limited to negotiations of lease between YMCA and City of Alice. Number two, section five five one point zero seven two, Texas Government Code, discussions about the value of leased real property multi-use complex located at seven twenty-three FM fifteen fifty-four, Alice, Texas. Sorry, I was out of breath.
That's a lot of reading.
I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to allow the city manager, or to authorize the city manager to enter, to negotiate contract and sign said contract, uh, with the YMCA for the multi-use complex.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, sign. Motion passes. Yes, yes. Agenda item number eighteen, adjourn and or consider and act upon adjournment.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Now, a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for joining us. It's seven nineteen PM. Thank you.
To... Have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.